Session, please, would you call the roll, Marlon?
Fritz Fish, here.
Saltzman, here.
Novick, here.
Hales, here.
Would you please read the item that we have this afternoon?
Item 250, Appeal of Northwest District Association Against Design Commission's Decision to Approve with Conditions the Tess O'Brien Apartments at 1953 Northwest Overton and 1950 Northwest Pettigrove Streets, LU 14-220722DZAD.
Okay. This is a quasi judicial land use hearing, so we first, before we turn it over to the city attorney for procedural instructions, need to check to see if any of us have potential conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report.
I did discuss the project with Mr. Keough back in December before the decision was made and the appeal was filed.
Any others? Anyone have any questions about council members, about our objectivity for this case? If not, then Catherine, would you walk us through the procedure, please?
Good afternoon. I have several announcements I'm required to make by state law. These concern the kind of hearing we're having today, the order of testimony, and some guidelines for presenting testimony. First, this is an on-the-record hearing, which means you must limit your testimony to material and issues in the record. Secondly, in terms of the order of testimony, we'll begin with a staff report by Bureau of Development Services staff for approximately 10 minutes. Following the staff report, the city council will hear from interested persons in the following order. The appellant will go first, and will have 10 minutes to present the appellant's case. Following the appellant, persons who support the appeal will go next. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the council. The applicant will then have 15 minutes to address the city council and rebut the appellant's presentation. If there's no, if there, well, in this case, and then the council will hear testimony from supporters of the applicant for three minutes each. Finally, the appellant will have five minutes to rebut the presentation of the applicant, and the council may then close the hearing and deliberate and take a vote on the appeal. If the vote is a tentative vote, the council will set a future date for the adoption of findings and a final vote on the appeal. If the council takes a final vote today, that will conclude the matter before the city council. Finally, as to guidelines for those who will be addressing the council today. Again, this is an on-the-record hearing, and the hearing is to decide only if the Design Commission made the correct decision based on the evidence that was presented to the commission. This means you must limit your remarks to arguments based on the record compiled by the commission. You may refer to evidence that was previously submitted to the Design Commission, but you may not submit new evidence today. If your argument includes new evidence or issues, you may be interrupted and reminded that you must limit your testimony to the record. The council will not consider the new information, and it will be rejected in the council's final decision. If you believe someone who addressed city council today improperly presented new evidence or presented a legal argument that relies on evidence that's not in the record, you may object to that argument. Finally, under state law, only issues that were raised before the Design Commission may be raised in this appeal to the city council. If you believe another person has raised issues today that were not raised before the commission, you may object to the council's consideration of that issue. That will, that concludes the opening statements I need to make.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions? Then let's have the staff report, please.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
My name is Stacy Monroe with Bureau of Development Services, Land Use Services. I'm here to provide the staff presentation for the appeal of the Design Commission decision for approval for the Tess O'Brien Apartments. Briefly get you acquainted with the proposal. It was for a two-six-story buildings, about 67 feet tall, 123 residential units, one of which was live-work, a large outdoor courtyard between the buildings, a little over 6,200 square feet in size, 153 bike parking spaces for residents both within the building and in the courtyard. The building is composed of brick, stucco, precast stone, storefront system, aluminum storefront and vinyl windows, and other detailing. No parking was provided, as none is required within the Northwest Plan District, and no loading was provided on the site. An adjustment was requested to that development standard. The image on the screen, the property is highlighted in red. The zoning of the property is Central Employment Zone, EXD, with a design overlay. It's located within the Northwest Plan District. Within this district, there is a 45-foot height limit, however, within the bonus area A of the district, which is evident or indicated with the blue outline on the screen, which this property resides in, there is an increase to 75 feet in height if over 50 percent of the floor area in the building is residential. You may also exceed the maximum 5:1 FAR in the district within this sub-area for an additional 1:1 FAR if the majority of the building is within, has residential component. The property is located within the Northwest Pedestrian District, and its frontages on Pettigrove and Overton are both local service streets. Here is an image and aerial of the vicinity. The property, again, is highlighted in red. The site consists of two tax lots that share an internal or rear property line. Together, they total about 18,000 square feet. Again, they're bounded by Pettigrove and Overton, with the additional boundaries of 19th and 20th. The remainder of the block is developed, as well as the surrounding area, with older one- and two-story industrial and commercial buildings and residences, older multi-story residential buildings, as well as some newer six-story development. On this enlarged aerial of the site, begin to kind of see how the block has developed. The abutting conditions of the northern portion of the lot on Pettigrove is bound by a six-story building to the left, which was approved in 2010, and a four-story older residential apartment building to the east. For the south portion of the site, it is flanked with two one-story structures, both on the west and the east sides. One, I believe, has an office or residential use, and the other one has an industrial use with a surface parking lot. Another item to note, at the southeast corner of the block, which is in the right-hand side of the screen, the Design Commission approved a six-story building back in January on the same block. So these are some images of the existing conditions along the Pettigrove frontage. The image in the center of the screen are the existing conditions, which is a surface parking lot. The images on either side of that represent the existing development, the newer six-story building on the right, and the older four-story residential building on the left. The images on the bottom of the screen show the predominant commercial characteristics of the street, which include buildings at the street lotlines, storefront conditions, and active ground floor uses. You can also see the predominance of the brick and stucco materials and the more pedestrian scaled elements, such as the canopies. These are some context images of the Overton frontage. Again, the southern portion of the site is represented by the image in the center of the screen. It's got the surface parking and an industrial building. On both sides of that image, you'll see the existing conditions, the smaller, single-story residential structure, which I'm not sure is occupied by residential, it could be a commercial use at this time, and on the east side, or I'm sorry, on the right side of the screen, the industrial building. Again, at the bottom, you'll see the more residential characteristics in the existing development. These characteristics have setbacks, residential stoops, covered porches, and landscaping, and those elements differ from the other frontage on Pettigrove. On the right side of the screen, you'll also see an image of the recently approved six-story structure at 19th and Overton that was approved by the commission about two months ago. So on the right is a site plan. As you can see, the building masses are focused along the street edge, both along Pettigrove and Overton. The building has zero side setbacks and zero street setbacks, except for the southern building on Overton, where there was a five-foot setback to allow an entry sequence with residential stoops to those units within that ground floor. As you can note, or as you can tell by the green overlay on this site plan, that is the outdoor space, and it occupies about a third of the site, which preserves it for a generously sized outdoor amenity space. As the neighboring properties redevelop, this depth and size of the courtyard ensures that the open space will remain viable as a central component in the middle of this block. So these are elevations of the building. This is the final product after four hearings with the Design Commission. On the left side is the Overton building. It's the larger of the two. It's about 100 feet wide and contains the most units. This building differs from the other building in that it has residential units at the ground level, and these units are, have a vertical separation of about three feet from the adjacent sidewalk, and a horizontal separation of about five feet, which allows some buffer and privacy within those units from that adjacent public space. And the building on the right is the Pettigrove building. It's the smaller of the two, and its frontage on Pettigrove is more consistent with the commercial nature of that street, and the residential unit was converted to a live-work unit with a storefront system, as you can see in the center bay of that building. So over the course of the design review process, as I mentioned, this is the final product. The project significantly improved in terms of the quality of the materials, the ground level transitions, the detailing and the finer scaled elements, and the overall composition, particularly on the street. So this project went through a Type III design review with an adjustment. The approval criteria that staff and the Design Commission based the approval on were the community design guidelines, as well as the adjustment approval criteria for the loading space. The land use review appeal findings must find that a nexus to relevant design guidelines or modification approval criteria have been met. The appellant states that specifically, Community Design Guideline D7, Blending Into the Neighborhood, has not been met, and an additional component of the appellant's statement is that a procedural error in the design review process occurred. So regarding the first point of the appeal, the Community Design Guideline D7, this guideline reads, or seeks to reduce the impact of new development on established neighborhoods by incorporating elements of nearby quality buildings, such as building details, massing, proportions, and materials. The appellant's statement includes, or states that the combination of the height of the buildings and the fact they're built up to the side property lines with no setback suggests that little has been done to reduce the impact on the adjacent development. It is suggested that at least six-foot side yard setbacks are provided, and the height of the Overton building is reduced in order to meet this guideline. So the commission, during their review and numerous hearings, they concluded that D7 had been met, along with blending into the neighborhood, along with the planned character area statement. By the buildings meeting the parameters of the infill development parameters that reinforce the partial block massing that's prevalent in the area, typically 100-foot building widths are in the area, this building is less than that, with 80 on the northern building and 100 on the south, maximum height of 75 feet, this building is 67 feet. The buildings are both broken down into distinct wall planes that are no greater than 50 to 100 feet. These are much smaller, in 22 and 37 feet wide. Additional aspects of the project helped to meet those guidelines and have this project blend into the character of the neighborhood, as well as into its immediate surroundings, by having high-quality materials such as brick and stucco, which are the predominant building materials in the area. It included finer scale details like canopies, lights, precast stone surrounds, which are very common in residential developments in the area, cornice lines and recessed windows. And particularly, it responded to the different frontages, as you can see in the images on the screen. On the image on the left, the Pettigrove frontage, you can see that it's got a more commercial character that responds to the more unique character of that frontage on Pettigrove with a storefront condition and a zero setback. And on the image on the right, again, the Overton building has a more residential character with a setback of the building, a vertical separation of the residential units, and more residential characteristics such as landscape areas and landings and stoops. So this process had, or this project had four formal design review hearings, beginning on November 6. At this hearing, a tentative vote of denial occurred, which was non-binding, since there was no staff report supporting that denial. After the first hearing, the applicant decided to make some changes in an effort to seek an approval for the project. As such, they signed an extension to extend the process. In general, at each hearing, the projects made improvements, and at each hearing, the -- I'll wrap it up in one minute. Okay. The Neighborhood Association was very involved, and they participated in the hearings and provided testimony at those hearings. Some of their concerns did align with the Design Commission, which in the end contributed to the improvements, particularly along the ground level, as evident in the final design. The final approval of the project occurred January of this year. At this hearing is when the Neighborhood Association testified with the massing concerns that is part of the appeal today. In response to that, the Design Commission did make a statement, and I'll read that into the record. They stated that the fundamentals of the zoning allowances, in particular height and setback, were put into place with the neighborhood's involvement in order to achieve housing and density goals. Discussions about the intensity of future development are currently underway and nearing its end with the comprehensive plan, and now is the time to get involved in that process with BPS, if these are concerns of the neighborhood. The final decision occurred, or was mailed on the 21st of this year, and staff received the appeal on February 4. The options before council today are to deny the appeal and uphold the Design Commission's decision to approve the Tess O'Brien Apartments with conditions, to deny the appeal and uphold the Design Commission's decision to approve Tess O'Brien Apartments and add modified, conditions to modify the approval, or to grant the appeal and overturn the Design Commission's decision, which would thereby deny the project. And that's the end of my presentation.
Okay. Questions, staff?
Question is slightly off-topic, but, and maybe we'll hear testimony about this, but the adjacent building on Pettigrove, the six-story building, appears to have been designed with no expectation that there would be a zero lotline building next door, even though that's what the site's zone for, looking at the sidewall of the six-story building that's...
You're talking about the six-story building on Pettigrove, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. It just seems strange to me that the Design Commission would have approved a design for that building that had windows all along the wall where a future building was expected. It's not so much a problem of this application as a head-scratcher about a previous one on my part. Any light you can throw on that question, or Tim? You know...
The planner who did that review was in the room. Let him speak.
Bonus. Tim Herron, Bureau of Development Services. Yes, we did that review, it was during 2009, I believe. You know, it was the developers' prerogative to pull the building back and add windows, and I think it had to do with the party of their foreplate for the residential units, knowing that it was a zero lotline development, they had that option, and certainly fully knew that another building could occur to the east that could also have a zero lotline development. In contrast, this project worked with a north-south egress window and east-west double-loaded corridor, so they took advantage of the plaza, which is internal to both these buildings, and the street fronts, which is kind of the unique kind of schism of the site plan.
Right. So there aren't windows on the sidewalls in the proposed buildings, right?
Correct.
Is that, one of them has a recess for the hallway, is that correct, Stacy?
I don't want to miss speed.
There are windows in the corridor.
At the courtyards.
Right, and that's a lot light in the hallways, so those would not be for a bedroom, per se.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Other questions for staff? Thank you. Thanks, Tim. Okay. We may have more questions of you later, but let's go ahead and call on the appellant.
Good afternoon. My name is Gustavo Cruz, and I live at 2224 Northwest Johnson Street. I'm the president of the Northwest District Association, or the NWDA, and I am testifying today in that capacity, along with other NWDA representatives. We are here today because our Neighborhood Association voted to appeal the Design Commission's approval of the Tess O'Brien Apartments project. As you consider this appeal, I hope you will reflect on the unique qualities of our neighborhoods and the trends affecting them. An improved local economy has spurred rapid development, and as a city, we've become increasingly concerned about affordability and how new development will alter the fabric of our neighborhoods. The recent trend toward demolitions reflects a push for increased density, and at times this trend is conflicted with other values, like the desire to retain the historic character of our neighborhoods. Several active corridors in Portland are now virtually unrecognizable from their appearance just two or three years ago. In this case, in addition to concerns over procedural issues that will be addressed separately, we feel that the proposed Tess O'Brien Apartments project is incompatible with the existing neighborhood because of its mass and scale. This project includes two six-story apartment buildings to be built mid-block on Northwest Overton and Northwest Pettigrove Streets between Northwest 19th and 20th avenues. There will be 123 residential units with no parking, and the apartments will be built virtually to the edge of the property lines. The building on the Overton side towers over its neighbors and the residences across the street, while the building on the Pettigrove side occupies virtually the entire footprint with only a 10-inch separation from the four-story building to the east. The applicant will argue that there's already a large apartment building at Northwest 20th and Pettigrove, so it would be unfair and inconsistent not to allow this development to go forward. However, we encourage you to consider what is referred to as the fine-grained pattern of development in the neighborhood. In other words, just because a six-story building may be acceptable at one corner of a block, that does not necessarily mean that a similar structure would be appropriate on the other side of the block or even a few blocks away. Each development should be considered in its immediate context and judged on its ability to blend into the neighborhood. We feel that this project does not satisfy that criteria. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Pinger. I live at 2669 Northwest Saver Street, and I'm representing the Northwest District Association. There have been several documents that have been submitted to you, the three sets of testimony from the hearings in November, December, and January, and a brief regarding our appeal was submitted last Friday, and hopefully you've had a chance to review those. I wanted to focus specifically on a couple of broad items regarding what we, the NWDA feels this appeal is about, a little bit of the background, and then focus in on what we feel is the specific guideline that is in question here, which is Guideline D7 and its intent. And I'll try and keep this fairly brief. So what this appeal is about, well, it's about a proposed apartment building, two buildings being proposed mid-block in an area of the transition area of the Northwest District Association, but more broadly, we feel that the appeal is also about the intent and purview of the discretionary review, design review process. And secondly, how, in established neighborhoods, the transition from existing patterns of development to new higher-density patterns of development is to be managed. And I think this is, can generally be considered to be an issue throughout the city. A little bit of background on some of this, Stacy has already gone through in her report, so I'll try and go fairly quickly, but this project got off to kind of a rocky start. Project was originally submitted and accepted as a Type II procedure, when I think its previously stated evaluation was well above the Type III threshold. The November 6 Design Commission hearing, the staff report concluded that all the relevant guidelines of the project have been met and recommended approval of the project. The commission, upon their review, however, voted unanimously to reject the staff report and deny approval of the proposed project. In our testimony, NWDA's expressed its opposition, or its position, that the three guidelines were not met by the proposal at that time. The D7 guideline regarding the need for a more compatible scale of the buildings in relationship to the neighboring buildings, the D8 guideline regarding the need for clear composition of the building facades, and the E3 guideline regarding the need for a less awkward relationship between the residential units on the ground floor and the directly adjacent public sidewalk. Several hearings later, in our testimony at the January 15 hearing, in which the project was ultimately approved, the NWDA commended the project team for their response to these issues and the improvements to the building designs, and truly, the building evolved considerably to a much, much better project. We felt that the buildings now met the standards for Guidelines D8 and E3, but we did not feel, and do not feel, however, that the buildings as proposed meet Guideline D7. So Guideline D7, I think, as has already been identified, refers to reducing the impact of new development on established neighborhoods, and doing so, by most other things, incorporating massing proportion and materials. We feel that this is the fundamental question that is at play here. We also feel that the D7 guideline, the compatible massing provision of this guideline is the relevant guideline in this situation, in which significant increases in the density of development are being proposed, and most importantly, where there are additional considerations and values to be weighed, other than simply what massing is allowed. In this instance, the combination of the height of the buildings and that they are built up to the property lines with no setbacks suggests that little has been done to reduce the impact of the new development. In brief, in a kind of diagrammatic representation of the existing conditions and the proposed conditions, on the right of this screen is the proposed six-story development at zero setback from the adjacent property, generally speaking, too close to the adjacent buildings, too tall. On Pettigrove Street, similarly, there is an adjacent six-story building, so the issue of the height of the building is not a question, but its relationship to the neighboring building to the east, the three-and-a-half-story apartment building, which it will be built directly up to or within 10 inches of. This is a diagrammatic depiction of the proposed massing from an overhead to the south, showing the pair of six-story buildings. This would be a depiction of a conceivable compatible massing, showing side yard provisions at both buildings and potentially lower height on the Overton frontage that was identified as having, I think, has been referred to, significantly different characteristics than the Pettigrove Street, amongst them being a much smaller scale of development all the way along the street. So, as I said, back to the... So, as I said, back to the kind of larger questions at hand, discretionary design review, at the December 6th hearing, the disparity between the staff report's assessment of this project and the design commission's was far too great. The guidelines, we believe, need to be applied more rigorously. They are not intended to be decorative, they're not intended to simply deal with facade materials and sizes of windows, but to establish the proposed project's general appropriateness with regard to scale and compatibility. And we feel that the staff did not take this into consideration in their recommendation to the commission. In discretionary design review, the application of designed guidelines is not constrained to what is simply allowable. And secondly, how to manage the transition between existing patterns of development and new, more dense patterns of development? And this is an issue that is throughout the city and will be dealing with on an ongoing basis. But the NWDA is appealing the commission's decision on this proposal because it felt that the application of the provisions of this specific guideline have citywide applications on how this transition is handled and can be achieved with some level of grace. And Guideline D7, I'm almost done, envisioned the necessity for mediating the transition between development patterns and would not have been written the way it has been, the way it was, had the intention been otherwise. The NWDA, therefore, is asking council to direct BDS to apply this guideline effectively and for its intended purpose. Thank you. Questions? I have one, which is, well, maybe more than one, but there's some, this block is a bit of a hodgepodge, if you don't mind me calling it that. There's some undeveloped, or rather, there's some low-scale industrial property on the block that has not yet been subject to redevelopment. I assume you expect that that will be subject to redevelopment, right? Some metal buildings and other existing industrial development that I assume is going to give way to something anticipated in the plan and the code. What would you expect to see in terms of scale on the adjacent parcels?
My own position would be that it's relative to the sequence of development. I think that, to me, what D7 suggests is that there is a progression in the transition between the existing patterns of development.
But the pattern of the development on this block is going to be, there's going to be six-story buildings on diagonally opposite corners unless the other buildings appealed.
Very true. I mean, I think our position, and it's, I think, exemplified here, is that the relationship of the building on Pettigrove and its height and bulk is not really the same as our view to the building on Overton, where the smaller-scale buildings to the west are probably not at play for redevelopment.
Okay. And then the other question I would have is that it's not directly germane to the approval criteria, but, I don't think it is, but the Conway redevelopment is one block away, and begins with 67-foot heights at the nearest corner and transitions up to 150-foot heights at the farthest extent of the master plan. Wouldn't a six-story building be compatible with the intended pattern of development in the rest of that part of the neighborhood?
It would be, and I was involved in the Conway master plan, and I think, as you know. And again, I mean, our position is that, you know, if you go the other direction, the alphabet historic district is two blocks away, and this is truly a transitional zone, trying to mediate between these two patterns of development. So I think that's really the question that we're trying to bring forward, is how can we do this gracefully? Because it seems as though there's plenty of examples of, you know, rather drastic juxtapositions and awkward relationships that aren't going to go away soon.
So if the council were to grant your appeal or otherwise go in that direction, what would satisfy you would be a shorter building on the Overton side? Is that what you're seeking?
I think there's probably several different approaches that could be taken, but the things that seem to be in question here are the height of the Overton building and the lack of side yards on both buildings.
But the issues of materials and form of the building, you're less concerned about at this point?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, our concern at this juncture is really compatible massing. I think the project team has done a terrific job at bringing the building forward and evolving it into a much, into a good project.
Okay, great. Other questions?
Just following up on that, if there were a five-foot side setback, what would you envision that the use of that be?
Light and air.
Well, it wouldn't be, though, because if it was, there wouldn't be that much light and air getting down between two tall buildings in a five-foot setback.
I would imagine at the southern building on the western side, it's very much a question of light and air and the juxtaposition to the smaller frame buildings. On the northern building, the larger building that was built in a few years ago is six feet off of the property line with windows and openings into the units there. And, you know, I certainly agree, it's, I think part of our question here is that, is what is allowable what should be approved? And yes, I mean, you can, it's allowable to build to the property line, but is that in the general public interest to approve that?
On the other side, I would just add, on the northern side of the block, that building, to its east, there's a smaller three-and-a-half-story building, it's only 10 inches apart from the proposed building.
Right.
So I was looking at that building today, and there are meters on that side of the older building. I mean, I think they're going to have to be moved, or some new meters will have to be purchased that are a fair bit smaller, because literally, they will not fit within 10 inches. And who knows what they'll do as far as access goes, they'll probably just have to move all the meters somewhere else. But it's really awkward, and I think it looks bad.
You're talking about the brick, the smaller brick building?
Exactly, yeah.
And there are also windows in those, on those side walls, and granted, they're on the property line, so the expectation that those windows, you know, would not at some point be covered is questionable. But again, should we allow that?
Other questions? Thank you very much. Are there individuals signed up in support of the appeal in addition to these?
I have one person signed up, Ron Walters.
Anyone else come on up?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ron Walters, I live at 2057 Northwest Overton Street, about a block from the proposed development. During the design review process, I have testified on behalf of NWDA, as well as personally, when NWDA did not have sufficient meeting notice to develop testimony that abides by public meeting rules. My testimony today is once again personal, so I can candidly share my personal experience regarding the troubling procedures that I perceived during the design review process. First, I wholeheartedly agree with NWDA's concerns about the height, massing, and general incompatibility of the Tess O'Brien Apartments with our existing and future neighborhood. However, my greater concern is the design review process was flawed. I was the sole NWDA representative that attended the first Design Commission hearing on November 6th. At that hearing, Design Commission was deeply concerned about many aspects of the proposed design, including those raised by NWDA with the developer, as well as at and prior to the November 6th hearing. As the hearing proceeded, it became increasingly clear that Design Commission was not going to approve this application. Chairperson Milius encouraged the applicant to consider seeking continuance on three separate occasions. On all three occasions, the applicant declined. In fact, they ultimately insisted on a vote, and Design Commission voted to unanimously deny the application. I was surprised the applicant didn't seek a continuance, which would have provided all parties additional time to find common ground. I believe everyone was caught off guard. As far as I've been able to determine, the situation is unprecedented. In any case, Mr. Heron said the record would be kept open so the BDS staff report could be updated to reflect the denial. So, from a layperson's perspective, the Design Commission did not offer continuance at the November 6th hearing, they voted to deny the application. On November 13th, a full week after the Design Commission decision, the applicant filed a request for an extension of the 120-day timeline requirement, which BDS says triggers a continuance. I fail to understand that logic or the administrative procedure as why an extension request after Design Commission has already decided to deny an application would trigger a continuance and essentially vacate Design Commission's decision. From my perspective, BDS should simply not issue a continuance on behalf of the Design Commission outside of a hearing. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not looking to win a legal argument, I'm a layperson and a neighborhood volunteer, and has a strong sense that this is not how the design review process should work. If Design Commission denies an application, BDS should not intervene to effectively overrule the Design Commission's decision. BDS should have simply supported Design Commission's decision, updated the staff report if necessary, and moved on. To that end, I respectfully request that you vote to support the NWDA appeal, to remedy procedural errors, and to deny the flawed project that is still not compatible with our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much, good afternoon. My name is Steve Spence, and I reside at 1932 Northwest Overton, which is directly across the street from the proposed development. These are the three-story walk-ups, which, just as a matter of interesting coincidence, when they were constructed in 2004, the height limitation for the neighborhood was three stories. As a prospective buyer, I was a little concerned about what might happen to the neighborhood in the transition from residential to industrial, and we took some comfort in that height limitation. So as you consider the issue of gradients in the neighborhood in transition, it's of also interest that the same developer, Marty Kehoe, was the person who developed our units. And so now we have an interesting situation where across the street, we go from height limitations that are three-story to six, seven stories, and whatever eventually has those properties become built out. I think you're correct, I think the neighborhood will continue to build out, it's on the light rail line, and we love living there. So I think that one of the issues I would ask you to consider is that the same developer who built these properties felt that that was marketable, economic, good use of the property, the Design Review Commission agreed with that, and now we are, the character of the neighborhood is changing dramatically. This is not a gradual, it's not a transition. So, that's one of the factors I would like to ask you to consider. Another factor in this issue has to do with the setback issue. These are aesthetic issues, not everything fits the same to every person in the eye of the beholder. And to build out to the lot line, essentially, in those directions which are public-facing, not the courtyard on the inside, but the public-facing areas, the impression of the neighborhood, as you might imagine, is that it's just being squeezed in. It is not in character with the way this neighborhood was historically built out, or the way our homes fit into the neighborhood. So in my view, the biggest single design flaw here, which was brought up and addressed in the design review process extensively by that commission, and I believe to be part of the reason for their 7-0 vote, was this very issue. And in fact, they went so far as to discuss what type of window coverings would be put up, what sort of mass with these windows being closed for privacy reasons. How will that property present itself to the street? And I ask you to use your imagination in that regard, and think what that means. One of the questions asked here is how might a setback be utilized, whether that setback is utilized for vegetation or whatever else it may be. At least it creates a transition. That's been successfully done on other buildings in the neighborhood, and I see no reason why that shouldn't be required at this building. The last thing I'd like to bring up is there is a requirement for loading spaces, which was requested to be waived and was granted. I believe that to be a huge mistake. Overton is one of the bicycle pathways, it is used very heavily. To have someone double parking, a FedEx truck or anyone else, causes pedestrians, bicyclists, cars near an intersection to come together. I can see no reason, since the city does not permit double parking, not to uphold the requirement that the loading spaces be included in any approval obtained. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for these men? Thank you both. Anyone else in support of the appeal? Okay, so then let's call up the applicant for rebuttal.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm Marty Kehoe, I'm the developer. First off, I think I should probably give you just brief background as to why we're here. When we started this project almost a year and a half ago, we went to the city and applied for the early assistance program, which is great, because it tells us everything we need to know, we pay several thousand dollars, and we get all the information, guidelines, criteria. We started developing it according to exactly what the criteria and what the guidelines and what the city told us to do. About six months later, after we had completely developed it and consulted with the city frequently, we applied for our permits, and were ready to go. We then were told, oops, our bad, we made a mistake, we gave you wrong information, you can't do it under community design guidelines, you have to go through a Type III. So after having spent over $450,000 designing it exactly the way the city told us to, and having gone through the early assistance program, which is heavily encouraged, and is typically a great thing to go through, we wasted $450,000, so we started all over again. We started by reaching out, we talked to the Neighborhood Association, we sent them a letter in March to the NWDA. We've had so far over 55 meetings with the city, with the Design Review Commission, staff, Neighborhood Association, individual neighbors, we've been available anytime, anyplace, anywhere to meet. And we have met at a lot of different places. We listened to what everybody said, and we did not go through the Design Review Commission, having them tell us no, and just keep coming back, trying to get our way. We listened to everything they said, and we regrouped after every single meeting, and we changed it as best we could, and as you, some of you may know, it's very difficult to interpret what the Design Review Commission says. At one meeting, we were told to pull the buildings back because it would give a greater, a better residential feel. At another meeting, we were told to push the buildings forward, as to give it more, a better street appeal. So, we've done it all, we've been at it for almost a year and a half on this thing. We've gone through multiple staff meetings, four Design Review Commission meetings, and we have made changes to the building that go on and on and on, that we could, we might go into with you. I wanted this building to look like a building that when you drive by it after two or three years after it's built, you don't know if it was built 10 years ago or 40 years ago. When you talk about blending in, that's all it was about. That was our first conversation with the architects, was that we make it blend in. The massing on the building is extremely compatible with what's going on in the neighborhood and in that area. We pulled the buildings back so that, and we separated them, and that's an enormous cost to do that. But I wanted to create a courtyard in between the buildings so that there was a ton of light and air and open space that would come through in the middle of the buildings. And I think we've done it very effectively. Directly to the west of us, the 20 Pettigrove Building is built at about 86% of its allowable FAR. The muse at the far side of the block that was just approved is also built at about 86% of its FAR. We come in with 61%. So there's, the argument that we're not compatible is only credible if you say that we're smaller than what's been built on that block. We have not built this, designed these buildings to come out anywhere near their maximum massing scale that's allowed. We have not even touched the size that we could. The buildings are, I think they're beautiful, I think they look great, and I really want to emphasize the fact that we listened to every single person we met with. The only person that we did not listen to was the man who wanted us to put windmills on the roof to generate our own power inside the buildings. I just drew the line at that, it didn't seem to make sense. But we met with everybody, we listened, we responded. But we met with everybody, we listened, we responded, and I think we've come up with a project that is as good as we could possibly come up with. We are at the end of a year and a half of working on this, and I ask that you give us your final vote and support the staff and support the DRC because we have all poured our heart and souls into this, and we ask for your support. And if there's any questions you might have, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you. Other points you want to make?
Yes. My name is Troy Ainsworth. I'm with FFA Architecture. We've been working with the development team through this process, and I wanted to elaborate a bit on some of the discussion about the massing expression of the building, the proposed buildings in the neighborhood. The image you have in front of you is an aerial view that includes the 20 Pettigrove Apartments that were built recently, as well as our proposed project. And ghosted in beyond there is the Muse, which is the project that's been discussed that was recently approved. This view, we feel, really strengthens the idea that, as has been discussed, it's a transition area, and there are a number of different building types of different scales that are represented in this neighborhood. Our goal, as Marty has stated, was to create a very respectful and appropriate infill project that is encouraged by the design guidelines and the zoning that apply to this area. Next. This is another view of this long block with the proposed Tess O'Brien Apartments on Overton and Pettigrove, 20 Pettigrove to the left, and then the Muse to the right, just to give you an idea of kind of the scale of the recent construction. And this image is to also illustrate for you the two recent projects, 20 Pettigrove on the left and the Muse at 19th and Overton on the right, the proposed project that will be moving forward. We feel as though we're very much, we're literally right next to 20 Pettigrove with one of the buildings, and then the Muse is just down the block. So, this image gets at what we were looking at, precedents, Northwest Portland precedents. There's been quite a bit of discussion about what is the character of the neighborhood and what is the massing and expression of the buildings of similar types. And these images show a number of precedents that we were looking at. We were looking at apartment buildings that were built early in the 20th century. They're very prominent in this neighborhood. We looked at the materiality of these, the composition. Materiality, brick, stone, stucco side and back walls. Composition of classic kind of base, middle, and top expressions, and brick and stone facades that are on the main street with, and sometimes they had minor setbacks, like a few feet for planting areas, that kind of thing. Next, please.
Were these shown to the Design Commission? Are they in the record?
The following images are addressing another topic that's been brought up, and that is the zero lot line construction. And this is also prominent in the Northwest neighborhood and in other neighborhoods, of course, in Portland. And it's very common, and these are apartment buildings that are built one next to the next, and that's a very common urban response. And so we were looking at that as a very applicable and appropriate precedent as well. When it came to the composition of the facades, particularly the streetfront facades, we were looking at built examples nearby, and these are some. Some are historic and some are not, but we were looking at the importance of the openings and how they're expressed, and the fact that the windows are very generous, and they provide light and air to these units. The base spacing and the proportion were all in response to what we saw around us. So just for orientation, this is a site plan, floor plan of the proposed project. The Overton Building on the left is the larger, the longer building, Pettigrove on the right. The primary differences I wanted to point out here is that the Overton Building, the two buildings respond differently to the street. The Overton Building is pulled back five feet from the sidewalk, and that five feet is used for stairs and stoops that lead to the ground floor units, which we raised above the finished grade so that there was a more optimal relationship for the residents of those units, so they're not right on the sidewalk. There was some discussion earlier about pulling curtains and that kind of thing, and this is one of the improvements that we made to the design, was to figure out how to maintain the other parts of the design but be able to raise those ground floor units on the Overton side. On the Pettig-- I'm sorry.
Sorry, before you leave that slide, so I'm assuming, again, back to my earlier questions to staff, that you've designed the building on Overton Street adjacent to the one-story warehouse and with the courtyard adjacent to the one-story warehouse with the expectation that a multi-story building is going to be built on that site, right? There are no windows on that wall. Is that correct?
That's right. There are windows on both the Overton and Pettigrove Building at the end of the corridor, but not windows out of the units. So yes, the answer is yes. I just also wanted to point out here the generous courtyard, that by pulling the project into two separate buildings, we have provided an amenity for the residents and really a mid-block amenity of access over a long period of time of light and views to the adjacent property owners. Lastly, the Pettigrove Building on the right, there's one residential unit there. We were responding to the more commercial nature of Pettigrove, and we have a live-work unit at grade on that first floor of the Pettigrove Building. So, just some elaboration on the Overton Building here. You've seen this image before. It's three brick bays with slots to help define the breakup of the facade. We have a base, a middle, and a top expression that is similar to the precedents that we showed. And then the base level, as you can see, the entry is on the right at grade, and then we have our two walk-up units with stairs, porches, and landscape areas. The loading door is off to the left, and we just wanted to mention that the request to not include a loading function was actually, that was requested by PBOT as part of the review process we went through.
Why was that?
Yeah, why was that? Is there a rationale there? Or do you know?
Do you recall?
I'm Carl Rafi, an architect with FFA Architecture and Interiors. I believe the rationale was that they wanted to reduce the number of curb cuts that were introduced into our frontage and able to preserve more street parking and reduce traffic across the sidewalk.
So the expectation that people moving in and out of the building are going to park at a curbside space and--
Yeah, these people, these people aren't going to be moving in with semi-tractor trailers. They're very small apartments. They'll bring a van or a station wagon and park curbside. We maintained the roll-up door as sort of a staging area where they could drop off their couch as they were moving in.
Okay.
So--
I'm embarrassed to say I wasn't aware that that was PBOT's request. Who at PBOT was involved?
I can't speak to that.
I don't recall.
So I wonder if there's a potential to have a truck-loading spot on the street? Because that is of concern. You know, what do people do and what do delivery trucks do? They can't necessarily park several blocks away to deliver. So do you know if there's been any consideration to having a truck spot?
No. I mean, we would prefer it something so that people could unload and load, but the most that people would be loading in is a couch because they're fully contained, small studio units. They have their own bathroom, their own kitchen and everything. We don't see them moving a lot of furniture in.
No, but when the UPS brings a package at Christmas that they might need somewhere.
PBOT asked for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And setting aside an entire space for the periodic UPS truck, I think that would, we need to think about that.
And I would be interested, I think we're going to get some more testimony later, but about the adjustment criteria and whether there was any mitigation for the loss of the loading. I mean, it's hard for me to see how not having a loading space equally or better means the intent of having a loading space.
I think one of the considerations was that PBOT was looking to get the maximum number of on-street parking spaces available in the area.
We're, as the developer and as the owner of the building, we're okay either way.
Right. I figured.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, continue. Thanks.
I'll continue here just to explain in a little more detail. The image you have now is the on-street or at eye-level experience of the Overton Building. As you can see, it's pulled back. It has an urban feel to it with the canopies overhead protecting the entry areas and the main building entry. The street edge is softened by the fences and the planters, and as you can see, the sill of the windows for those walk-up units is at or above eye level, depending on how tall you are. Next image is the similar view of the Pettigrove Building. As you can see, it's also three bays, but the building is narrower, so they are three equal brick bays. And again, you have a base, middle, and top. It is one project with two buildings that have different appearance nuances because the developer's goal was to have a project with an identity on both streets that had similar characteristics. This is the one also that has the one live-work unit at grade, and that's about, those are the items I wanted to mention there. And then here's the sidewalk view of the Pettigrove Building. And next, the courtyard. So this is really a unique aspect of this project, and we feel as though it's one of the most positive things about the scheme. By pulling what could have been one much larger building into two smaller ones, we created a level of intimacy of the buildings and a great outdoor space for the residents and as a resource to the entire block of what, you know, has been discussed to be, will be heavier, more dense development as time goes on. So this also has a number of amenities for the residents, bike parking, as well as other items for their use.
The bike parking is there in the courtyard or--
Yeah, the bike parking, part of the bike parking is inside, but part of the, because there's requirements for 153 bicycles, the parking also is in the courtyard itself. It's in those elements that you see that have kind of opaque roof panels. So around the perimeter, we have the bike parking undercover in those areas and also along the edges of the buildings.
But about half of it is entirely within the building.
So we feel as though, when here's an eye-level view of the courtyard, landscaped, pavers, community gathering places, nice edges with trellises, and as we mentioned, the bike parking, which is softened by plantings and fences. And then lastly--
That looks like a very grown-up space. It's not envisioned to be a play space?
Probably not because the units are small. They're probably, the apartments are, will likely be occupied by individuals or possibly two people.
But it's also, if I could just say one thing about it, the way we designed the building with the courtyard and the amenities that go with it, it's designed to be less of a transient type of apartment building. The average person moves in and out of apartment buildings like that once every 14 months, and what we're trying to do is design something so that they stay much longer, and it's more of a sense of the community and the feel. So that's all the tones and the warmth of it that we're trying to do.
So to wrap up, we feel very strongly, we're big believers in this project, and we feel very strongly that we've designed a project that is entirely responsive to the historic precedents in the neighborhood, built precedents not only in the past but of the recent past, and that this is going to be a very good neighbor to the buildings, the context that is there and the context that will be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further questions? Do you have anything to add?
No.
Could you address the concern about the side setbacks and the 10 inches between this building and the adjacent one and the meters on the adjacent building that may have to be moved? Was that, what was your thinking in why you decided to put the sides, to have no side setback?
The side setbacks, as has been discussed, are usually awkward spaces. There are little slots that kind of gather garbage. The existing apartment building, the very small one, is an old, old building, and it's allowed to be next to that building. It was probably built as a zero-outline building originally, and some of the things that have been brought up about windows and gas meters and things, we are guessing were things that were changed about that building later with maybe not an appreciation for the fact that someone was fully allowed to build a zero-outline building next to it in the future. Some of that's conjecture, but the building is, I believe, Carl Dewey, it's over 100 years old. Wasn't it built around the turn of the century, this little brick apartment?
I was nodding his head.
Yeah. So, who knows the changes, but it probably didn't have gas meters and things like that to it when it was originally constructed. Who knows what may have been done over time?
So what will, have you had discussions with the owner of that building? They'll have to move their meters?
We, the architects, have not had detailed discussions.
Our general contractor has not had a discussion with them yet, but we will and try to do what we can to not make it as impactful for them economically. PG has to be involved with regards to the meters, and our electrical supply company that will be doing the electrical work on us for our project might also come into play to see about moving the meters to an inside space that might accommodate the meter readers. So it's in flux, but we're not, we're not going to build a concrete wall and thumb our nose at them.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant and his team? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of the application and in opposition to the appeal?
I have one person signed up, Jason Larson.
Come on up, please.
My name's Jason Larson, and I just wanted to come and speak in favor of the building being built. I have an office in the area, and I think when you take a look at this project, as you said, you know, the block is sort of a hodgepodge or does a general direction of development in the area. This is what is being built with the six-story beside it, and like you were mentioning about the Conway Project, this is somewhat of the direction of where things are going. I think what's unique about this project is the building looks age-appropriate for the district. I had, I'm one of the 55 meetings I got to take where I got to learn more about the building, and I think it fits the general character of what's going on in the neighborhood now and what has been going on for a century. It was interesting to hear earlier, I was talking about the three-story units across the way. If you go back a few more decades, there were gigantic homes in the area. But, you know, where I look at, as I have an office there and talking to people that work in the district, this is somewhat what the housing need is evolving to, is these smaller units, lots of bike parking, and things that weren't even considered even a few years ago when, like, the three-story townhomes were built. So I think, you know, there's a lot of excitement for this project and all the projects that are coming in. Generally, they bring new vibrancy, a lot of new restaurants on the retail level, and a lot of accessibility for the huge amount of jobs that are being created all through this area in the Pearl District and the CBD in general. So I just think it is important to note that there are a lot of people that are excited to see this stuff come, and from a size and usability standpoint, I think it actually fits the character of the street and the neighborhood very, very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything further in terms of public testimony? Any further questions for staff? Do we need the staff to come back up?
Yes, please.
Please, come on up.
Is there a rebuttal?
Oh, we have a rebuttal.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have the, we have the appellant's rebuttal. Sorry.
We have none.
You have none? Okay. Sorry. All right. Then staff, please.
So I wanted to briefly address the loading adjustment. So the, to not provide loading was not suggested by transportation or P-Bot. It was the response to the concern about pedestrian conflicts. There was originally one loading space provided within each building where the overhead doors currently proposed. And since the truck would be reversing out onto the sidewalk, across the sidewalk into the street, P-Bot had big concerns with the conflicts associated with that. So given that the project is entirely residential and that the units are small, what they have learned over the past years with residential development is that the loading needs are frequently highest at occupancy of the building, and then those kind of peter off until just when units are changing over. Also, given the size of the units, the loading vehicles are rather small, they're not these large trucks, they're vans and other smaller trucks. So given that fact, P-Bot felt that, that loading could be provided on the street with, by securing some on-street loading passes from transportation, and that would fill the need for these, for these two buildings, rather than punching a hole in the building and having that, that reverse motion occurring. In addition, it also provides more on-street parking, which has been a huge concern in this neighborhood. It will provide about seven on-street parking spaces to this neighborhood, so that was another factor in the decision.
And the retail loading is expected, again, to be smaller trucks for the small amount of retail space there is?
Correct. So there is only one potential retail space, and that's in the, on Pettigrove, it's a live-work unit.
Right.
And as a live-work unit, the, and the size of it, it wouldn't generate much loading. Transportation has also witnessed that the smaller delivery trucks, UPS, FedEx, all of those, those delivery trucks never use onsite loading spaces. They, they most frequently double-park or use on-street because they just, they're in and out really quick, just the nature of their business. So they also felt that this on-street parking would also provide some loading opportunities for these types of delivery trucks as well.
And then could you please address the procedural question as far as granting a continuance after the tentative denial vote?
Want to jump into that?
Sure, I'll, I'll take that one. Yeah, that was unfortunate that the neighborhood felt confused by the process and how it moved forward from there. And what I would say is, the commission is, has been struggling with ground floor residential in main streets and corridors and different spaces. And so, when staff presented a report that was for full approval, we thought we had it right, in working with the applicant and working the design over, we did not, in the eyes of the Design Commission. The applicant asked for the vote to be called because there was not a report that could be adopted by the commission on that moment and on that day. It was a tentative decision, the hearing was continued. I specifically asked the commission to be very clear with what their concerns were, so that we can write a thorough denial response, because our report needed to take a 180-degree turn. In that deliberation and specificity, we took that back to the applicant, and I think they realized we're not that far from approval. Maybe we don't want a denial to be formalized in a final denial, and ask for the record to be held open vis-à-vis extending their hearing date, that is their right. And when we returned before the Design Commission and explained that situation, you know, the Design Commission has an ethos of getting to yes, not to mention state law allows the applicant to extend the timeline. Were they to ask the question again and have not made the changes that we heard the commission needed to be changed, we would have had a denial, and we would have been done. But I disagree with the assertion that BDS told the Design Commission what to do. The Design Commission is in charge, they are the review body, but I didn't see, and the commission didn't see why we should deny it, if the applicant's willing to make changes.
So if I may paraphrase, it was the, Design Commission made a tentative decision on November 6th, but the record was kept open, and that's when the applicant asked for the, to return to it and exercise their rights to extend the one in 20 days.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? Now Commissioner Fish is excused, so we'll see if there's a majority of the council that has an opinion one way or the other on this action, and if not, we might have to continue our own hearing, but we'll see if, if that's the case. So is there a motion?
I would move that we deny the appeal and uphold the Design Commission's decision to approve with conditions.
Second.
Okay, further discussion of the motion? Roll call on the motion then, please.
And this will be--
A tentative decision, be supported by findings.
Fritz? Thank you very much, the Northwest District Association, as always, a very thoughtful and well-reasoned presentation as to your concerns, and I think many of them do have merit. I know that you are participating in the comprehensive plan update process and will continue to do so, and so I greatly appreciate your ongoing volunteer effort and your diligence in protecting the character of your neighborhood, even as it develops and changes, so thank you for that. Thanks to the applicants who did want to be responsive, and what I heard was today and in briefings, was that the design did improve, and indeed, was said today that you acknowledged that the design has improved over the course of the discussions, so I appreciate that. I am a little concerned about that side setback piece, but for me, the courtyard space ongoing, which is, will do the light and air better than a five-foot setback, potentially eventually set between two six-story buildings, which would not be very lighty or airy. And so I am, I'm not entirely comfortable with that, but I'm willing to accept the Design Commission's recommendation, and thanks to the Design Commission for all of their work on these issues and trying to get to yes, and sometimes saying no, and that's amazing diligent work. There are volunteers putting in hours and hours and hours of time and a lot of expertise, and I solemnly appreciate that. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I appreciate the issues we raised today. I do feel that, in looking at these proposed buildings, it looks like the Design Commission, the design, the architects and the developer with the input of neighborhoods have produced something that I think, to me, looks like it fits in with this neighborhood and is appropriate for this, this transition zone, which is still somewhat of a zone in, in state of flux. And I think that these buildings, as I think somebody stated, they look like they've been here for a long time. And I like, and I also appreciate the, the thoughtfulness of the courtyard connecting the two buildings. That's something I've, I've never seen before, frankly, in a design here. So I appreciate the good work that's been put in by all, but I ultimately agree with the decision of the Design Commission, and vote aye.
Novick?
I appreciate the hard work of everybody involved, and I especially appreciate the thoughtful and respectful nature of the discussion today. These land use proceedings can be pretty heated, and I really appreciate the fact that although, obviously, people had different views, they were, everybody was respectful of each other and presented thoughtful arguments, so thank you very much for that. Aye.
Hales?
Yeah, the process sounds like it was long and, and maybe expensive as well, but I think it resulted in a better design, thanks to the advocacy of the neighborhood and the diligence of the Design Commission and the staff, so that we got to a better project. I, I don't read D7 the same way that the NWDA did in this case, and that is, when it says, "Reduce the impact of new development on established neighborhoods by incorporating elements of nearby quality buildings, such as building details, massing proportions, and materials," I don't read that as a mandate for stepping down scale. I read that as a mandate for looking at the neighborhood and trying to incorporate elements architecturally into the project, and I think the applicant has done that in this case. And I just want to second the comments about the courtyard. I think that's not only an amenity to the project, but actually is a rather generous gesture to the buildings around it, one of which looks like it was designed with in a hope that nothing would ever be built next door, as I brought up earlier, and they got lucky, frankly, in this case, that the applicant has proposed a courtyard for at least half of the frontage of that building on that side. So, so they, they ought to buy, buy the neighborhood a pie for the welcome party, because, you know, the, otherwise, they would have had the applicants entitled, at least in code, to a blank wall along the entire frontage of that building. So, again, that's not the issue before us, but I'm, I'm still a little mystified why the, whoever built that building did it that way, but they got lucky in this case. And I think this, this building is designed thoughtfully to the context of what's there and what's going to be there as the Conway development and other development takes place in the area. I think it's important to remember that, in this case, the underlying zone, yes, it's a design district, but the underlying zone is EX, which is downtown commercial. That's the, along with CX, the, the two most aggressive, most urban zoning designations that we have. So if we're at 61% of allowable FAR in an EX zone, and the building has been sensitively designed, then I think it has met the criteria. Aye.
And we need to set a date for findings, to come back to council?
March 25th, would that work?
That would, Commissioner Fish is gone, so 10:45 in the morning?
Sure, yeah, it's just for findings, so. So we'll have findings on the council calendar for March 25th, and we are recessed until tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Thank you.